Ready? Okay, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order Monday, April 15th at 7:04 PM. All rise. Thank you. All councilors are present with Council Santiago online. I would like to go over the oath of office for Councilor Ty Bailey. Can. I'd like to read that first to get him all legal and then we will look at the agenda. So. Down here. Hey, so we are looking at the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved. President Miller. It's a motion any second.
A second.
And by Council Jacob's any discussion. Council Holmes. Council Holmes made a second to accept the agenda. Appreciate that. Any discussion? That's in yet. Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Public comment. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers and speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we're limited to 30 minutes total for public comments. Any tonight? Or move on anybody online? Thank you. Well, those public comments and move on to consent agenda. Right, we're looking at the April 1, 2024 city council work session minutes. April 1, 2024 city council meeting minutes. An appointment of Sarah Jones Graham is a full member to the planning commission. Do you want to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So motioned.
Bailey. Motion to accept the consent agenda any seconds?
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in fiver state by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And carries. Hey, I've got a few proclamations to go over tonight. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I will read the first paragraph. About National Day of Awareness Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. Under the Not Visible Act passed in October of 2020, the Department of Justice Interior created a joint commission on reducing violent crimes against American Indians and Alaska Native. On May 5th, 2022, U.S. Secretary of the Interior Deb Haaland announced the full membership of the commission, composed of federal and non-federal members with a diverse range of experiences, expertise, and perspective. So each year, May 5th is now recognized as the National Day of Awareness for missing and murdered indigenous women and girls throughout the U.S. That. And today, City of Scappus National Volunteer Week. I'll read this one. Whereas National Volunteer Week has been observed annually since 1974 at all governmental levels and recognizes volunteerism, participation, sharing, and working together to make a difference. Whereas the City of Scappus depends on volunteers for many programs that are a service and benefit to the community. Whereas there is a need for more voluntary community service to help continue these programs. Where serving as a volunteer is a rewarding experience. Now therefore be it resolved by Joseph Backus, Mayor of the City of Scappus, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the week of April 21 to 27, 2024 as National Volunteer Week to honor and recognize the individuals who have made a difference in our communities. Witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed on its city hall in the City of Scappus, Oregon on April 15th, 2024. And one more. And we have National Small Business Month. Whereas the month of May 2024 has been designated as National Small Business Month in recognition of the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. Whereas nationally, more than half of Americans either own or work from a small for a small business. And they create two out of every three jobs in the United States each year. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy and we must work to ensure that our city recovers and rebuilds not only from the top down, but also from the bottom up and the middle out. Whereas locally in Scappus, 95% of our businesses are small businesses with 50 or fewer employees. And whereas the City of Scappus takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs and small business owners and recognizes that Small Business Month is a time for us to celebrate the success of small business and to thank our small business owners for their contributions to our city, our economy, and our nation. Now therefore, I Joseph Backus, Scappus Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Small Business Month. The handle is all out. We all. Drink. Hey, we're on to old business. Ordinance 918 franchise with Century Link. We're on second reading and approval. We've had a vote and a second. And then do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, discussion on that.
Council President Miller.
City Manager Lehman and I had a short exchange via email regarding this. And I proposed language that didn't lock the city into a rate that could be potentially adjusted by law at a later time. And Century Link, it's my understanding from my interaction with City Manager Lehman that Century Link proposed some language back, but reading that language, it doesn't obligate either party to do anything. So in my opinion, it was rather useless. So with that said, I would propose that we go ahead and approve with the contingency that we change the term to four years.
So we have a proposal to instead of 10 years, I believe it reads is to offer for four years?
Correct.
Do I need to vote on the original motion and close and re and if it doesn't pass reopen or the motion?
No. The council member, Tyler, you'd make a motion to amend it. Then we'd get a second and then see what happens.
Right, so I would move, just so we don't hold it up, that we would approve it with amendment of four years so that you guys can move forward with it.
We had a motion to approve it at 10. A second. Now I'm accepting a motion to amend that to four years?
Yes.
We have a second to
Second.
Second by Council Bailey to accept the Century Link franchise with the amendment of four years. Any discussion on that? Jeanette, did you have a question?
Yes, so I, just to clarify, that would not affect any agreement or with Century Link? Or would be any negative effect? If we go from four years to or from 10 years to four-year commitment?
I don't believe so. I've not discussed changing that with them, but I can't imagine any problem. I don't think it's, I think it's okay. Should be good.
Okay.
18 years. So I don't know what happened. All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed. So the motion carries with the hey. You're moving on to discussion. Definition of duty coverage, survey question, supplemental information from the city regarding 24/7 policing services in the City of Scappus. Any updates, Council Holmes?
Yes, thank you. So following up to the request that came from Council last meeting, that Council LaFranz and I work on developing a survey to go out to residents. After a few back and forths of some survey options and versions, it's clear that I think this council needs to do a little bit more work fundamentally to define both what it means to have 24/7 coverage and how we talk about it. And then what we want to get out of the survey itself. Jeanette, Council Santiago, apologies. There's one piece of supplemental information that Susan was able to print and provide to council, which you might not have, which is just some versions of the surveys that we bounced back and forth. And I'm not asking for any sort of decision on a survey format. I provide this just so you guys see that how the approach we choose would play out and how we design the questions themselves. So I think, you know, what I would ask is that this council have a discussion about how we view 24/7 coverage and what that means and how we talk about that, both in purposes of this survey, but also too, you know, for our own department. If, if, you know, we're asking them to, you know, create a strategic plan around how we achieve that level of service and coverage, what are we asking them to do effectively? What is the expectation on the level of service from council? So I'd ask that we have that discussion today and then also discuss kind of revisit what the purpose of this survey was. In my mind, you know, what we wanted to understand is when presented with trade-offs of different scenarios, what would the preferences of residents be? And I think Council LaFranz maybe had a different goal with the survey. If he would like to go ahead and expand on that, I would be happy for him to share that with you. But I think we also, if we are going to take the step of doing the survey, we need to really define what it is that we want, what is the information that we want to get that will be useful for us in the decision-making process.
Hey, Council Holmes, could we first start, we dive into
I'm sorry, Council Jacob, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I said before we dive into the conversation of how the survey exercise went. Can we first start, I think, with definition? Because I think that will help to frame up how we need to move forward. And I would like to offer up if we could first start with what current coverage is. And if someone would like to define that, what we currently have, whether we, someone on the council can do it, or we have our public safety director.
Currently, we provide, essentially, we do provide 24/7 coverage in the sense that we have officers on duty actively patrolling from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, we have officers that are on an on-call status. Which means if there were a emergency type of call or a call that we felt needed, a Scappus police officer to respond, dispatch would then call the on-call officer would then respond. So it would be a little bit delayed in the sense that it wouldn't be as quick as if someone was actually on duty in the city at the time. If it is an emergency though, the sheriff's office does provide 24/7 coverage. So essentially either an deputy from the sheriff's office or a trooper, if a trooper was available, or even a St. Helens officer could respond in an emergency type of situation to secure the scene and make sure the scene is safe. And then a Scappus officer would come to essentially do the investigation, do a, any follow-up investigation.
So it sounds like to me based off how you would
There is an officer that is able to respond 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the City of Scappus, yes.
Or are we accepting that?
Yeah, up to council to decide because I would say, I would contend that yes, there is someone to call 24/7 hours a day. That level of service is not the same uniformly throughout that 24-hour period.
I would ask.
Whenever there's someone on call.
Council Jacob, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. The same as being on duty.
I was asking, are we saying the gap between 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM is a piece that is being discussed? To get to definition of 24/7, 2 to 7 is not how it is from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
My question to Director Jensen is if we had three more officers, because we're understaffed. I mean, we have some openings, you know, we, if we had the three officers that were budgeted for, would one of them be on the, in the city during those hours? I mean.
Potentially, yes. Of course, we were going to look at, I think
Most valuable.
Responsible would be where, where the staffing is needed most, which typically we look at the call volume and where the calls are needed, where the the general public needs it more. I mean, typically the 2 to 7 is very, very low call volume. I mean, at 3 o'clock in the morning, there's just not a lot going on in Scappus. Whereas 8 o'clock in the morning, a bunch going on, a bunch of traffic, we got school, we got businesses opening, all that. So I think if we did have all of our officers operational that we currently are allotted, then yeah, it would look much different. We would be able to, if we chose to, to have someone on that 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM coverage.
Warranted it. Okay, so yeah, the definition, I think, is if we can set it. Is that 24/7 to you if we have just one on call?
On duty.
On call. I mean, if nobody's on duty, but they're on call, is that still considered 24/7?
I mean, just in doing my own due diligence through the course of these several months and hearing all of the materials and, and reading myself, did as a community vote a levy in for the sheriffs. That levy does, we all pay it. If there is a call that comes in between 2 and 7, yes, we have someone on duty, but the sheriff is obligated to respond to us. So I guess when we say, do we have 24/7 coverage? When we say just that, the answer to that question to me is yes.
And I will share that the sheriff did provide an email to myself and the mayor and Council LaFranz did have a conversation with him. He does not consider, consider that arrangement 24/7 coverage. If there is someone being victimized at 2:00 AM and the call comes in and his deputy is often missed Birkenfeld, it could be an hour before they get into town. And I'm not sure that that's the type of response that this community necessarily wants. And I did go back. So, you know, the mayor and I have talked about how we heard from residents through the campaign for the election that there was a concern that we have a gap in on-duty coverage. And so I went back through, you know, some of the social media posts that were driving that. There's, I mean, it's, it's well documented that there are car prowlers. 5:00 AM attempt, break-in at cars. The car wash has been broken into. Morgamore came in and gave public comment on September 7th, 2021 about ongoing break-ins during that period of time, asking for more police support. And there was, yeah, another reference to a vehicle being stolen from Fred Meyer and the response time was five hours by the police after it was reported because it was during these off-hour times. So there is documented need from the community desire for there to be an on-duty police presence during this time. And so I understand that this is the arrangement that we have been forced to function with because we've had, we've been short-staffed. Our officers are working very, very hard to cover what they can. But when we define 24/7 coverage, is that what we're talking about? Or are we talking about on-duty? Because that really does define how we shape the survey questions.
Is your definition, Council Holmes, of 24/7 coverage?
So I would say what we should aspire to for 24/7 coverage would be having at least one officer on duty around the clock to give the same level of response and service consistently throughout the day. That none of those hours are going to be treated differently or service would be offered differently during those hours. That would be my ideal. In the surveys, and you'll see there in the survey options, I, I do offer kind of multiple ways to approach it. We can talk about this is 24, there's 24/7 coverage, but what we currently have is 24/7 coverage that is split between on-duty and on-call. And there's 24/7 on-duty coverage. So we can call it 24/7 coverage, but I think we need to qualify what it is. What is the level of service that's being delivered and offered to the community during that time?
Just to add some context too, I mean, one of the reasons why I think this is, the definition is so important is I was getting a lot of feedback from the community that people would literally come up and based on narrative of this whole exploration the past four months now, I guess. People have been asking me, they, it sounds like they assume that no one's going to pick up 911 when they call in the gap in coverage. And so that's far from the truth. And so I, I think the, the general feedback from the community is that they, someone's going to answer and someone's going to respond. Depending on the level of priority, I get it. And of course, the response thing is a real, is a real issue, but I would also, I think it's pretty easy to argue that we have way more priorities. For example, we have periods during the week where we only have one officer during high-volume call periods during the day. So I think just that was one of my issues with the way that the original draft was put together is it's, it's assuming that this is a council priority. And it's assuming the community wants it. It's just the reality is we, we need to keep the officers we have safe by not having them by themselves, like during these high priority calls during the day.
Yeah, and, and I, if I could just add, so it is a council priority. I did look back at the
Goal, it's a council goal.
Right, so we do have a stated council goal to conduct feasibility study with community outreach to increase to 24/7 public safety, safety coverage. So again, that kind of goes back to why this discussion is so important. We have to define what that is.
That is, that was the third goal under the goal number three. If you remember, the first one, 3.1 was to retain officers. And that's what we should be focusing on right now.
I'll, Jeanette, I have something, but if you'd like to go, Council Santiago.
I, I, I think that everybody does have a different, all the council members might have, it sounds like I have a different definition of what a 24-hour, seven days a week means for them. But I think the most important, the real question is, is, is we're trying to ask the question to the public, to the residents of Scappus. How important it is to have, it's, is it the needs of or the want, so the aspire to, the need to have one officer to aspire to having two officers on duty? And, and I think those are the questions because personally I would love to, to have two officers on duty at least every, you know, not all by themselves for safety reasons. But that's my opinion. So more, we should, I know what we, we personally have. I think we should take ourselves out of that and really just ask the question to the residents. How important is this to you? Because ultimately, we, if we want to create the police department, if we, people really want to keep this in-house, then what does that really look like? And are, and are the residents willing to put the, you know, it, we're going to have to put more money into the police department because how it is right now, it hasn't been working. And so what is it that we need to do? We need to retain, we need to recruit quality officers, recruit a, a qualified chief ultimately. And so we need to build that infrastructure first. And then we can, you know, build a, a police department, whether if we want to keep it inside, you know, in-house. But I think we're just kind of getting, as council members, we're getting really into like, what, what, what's 24-hour for you? Is it one officer? Is it two officers? I think we should just pose a question to the residents and how important it is to them. And ultimately, are they willing to pay for it if we need more money? That's just what I think.
So if I could just ask for a clarification, Council Santiago. So the question that you would, that you are most interested in asking is how interested are you in the current level of service, which is like, how, do you want to retain the current level of service or do you want on 24/7 on duty? So understanding the difference in the desired level of service would be most important to you?
I think that most, most of the resident, I'm not sure if they really know what we currently have. And, and thank you for, Council Jacob's for posing that question, is to know what we have currently, what we, what we need. Maybe we're a little off of what we really need and maybe another level, it would be what we aspire to. Because I've heard all of those. It's like where we are, what really we need and what we aspire to. And what is that cost to aspire to?
Sure. Yes. I think one of the differentiations that we need to make here too is there, this question is just about what we define 24/7, 365 coverage as. And it doesn't necessarily relate to contracting with CCSO. So I think what we, there's two different topics here. And this is an opportunity to define what 24/7, 365 coverage looks like to our community. So that if we do keep the PD internal and we know what to aspire to, we know what the goal is and we know what to work towards based on what the community's input is. The question about the cost in between internal PD and CCSO is a completely different topic. But I, I do think we need to make that, we need to set aside that difference there.
And I agree. That's why I didn't want to get into like asking the community about funding issues like that in, in our own schedule or levies. I think we fundamentally need to know, like, are, are they currently happy with the service we have? Which, but I mean, I haven't heard otherwise. The only thing we've heard is public comments about respect, support. I just, it's been months and we haven't, the town hall, many of us have heard nothing but, but people that want to keep the local police department, so.
If I may, you know, coming in, reading through this stuff, do we even have time on, other than definitional, but if we're talking finances, do we even have time to actually make decisions at this point? Because budgets are like two weeks. Yeah, like even trying to get a survey out in May, that means we're probably not actioning anything until next fiscal year anyway. Like I, I don't see how we'd be able to align those. I think we have run out the clock on the current situation and we have time to talk to the community and actually get an assessment of A. Are, is there an interest from a fiscal standpoint for moving to a county setup? Or B, even if that's the case, what is the definition community-wise for the level of coverage that they're willing to pay for or want? But I, I think right now it feels there's a level of urgency that the reality isn't going to allow us to actually action upon, personally.
Except with, dealing with Carol, we have looked at the budget and there is some budget in this year for some growth.
Yeah.
So we, we, we may not have been able to define it yet, but based on the numbers that we have, I think there is some room in there for a step.
He is correct.
Yeah.
I've got two weeks to get the budgets, budget committee. I have to it is actually lower.
I'm sorry, Carol, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Always.
Apologies. I hope my mic's on. Okay, it looks like it is. So, yeah, because we're like two weeks out for me to have the budgets printed, ready to go to everybody. And that's really pushing it, you know, so, you know, I can propose, go forward with the budget that Brian and I have, have proposed, which gives, you know, increases to the, you know, to the officers and is actually a lower number than, you know, we have in our current budget. So we, we've tried to save money wherever we can. And we keep the force, you know, once we get all of our officers filled, it will give us eight officers. You know, plus the two sergeants and the chief.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, one of the things that we've heard is that the police department personnel understandably wants us to make a decision on this. But if I'm understanding what I just heard correctly, now there's no rush because the budget is.
Well, but I just, I can't, I can only change the budget until I can change the budget. You know, I mean, that's, you know, sure, could it change the budget? We could up until budget committee. Now we can do it up, we have to have our meetings, our two meetings, so you can
I
the budget by June 9.
I understand what you're saying, Carol. My, my issue is, is that we have decisions to make to move the city forward. Like hiring a police chief and things like that. So we do have to make a decision on this, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, the sooner the better as far as the decision goes.
I'll go over a few things that I've been thinking, you know, I've, from the beginning, I really do thank Council Holmes for spearheading this. You know, regardless Um, you know, regardless of the outcome, I think this is a valuable exercise. It's really going to help educate me on our police department, um, on the county sheriff's department, um, and and many input and thoughts from our citizens. Um, they will help us go forward and build and make this a better, a stronger department. Um, I do feel bad that, you know, we do have goals. Three point one was to develop and implement a plan to retain the police department personnel. Plan through, our goal three point three was conduct feasibility study with community outreach to increase twenty four public safety coverage. And to me, that was what I was really focusing on. And I felt bad that, you know, the first headline is Scappus is considering to dissolve their police department when that is not the thing that's on my mind that we're trying to do. But when we, these studies come out and thoughts come out, it did come out that um, you can contract with a county and a lot of people have. So doing our due diligence and and Kim really wanting to stay transparent really said, we, we have to look at all this. Um, I've been going around this over and over and over, talking to a lot of people. I just um, budget timing, talking to police department, I I do think we do need to make a decision. Um, I really am leaning towards, um, you know, it's just my opinion, one person, and I'm not going to sway to any of you. But I'd like to see what we could do with our local police department. And if we could get with the director and and come up with a strategic plan to get where we want to go um, and define that twenty four seven public, you know, safety coverage. Um, and I, I, the survey question to me was, you know, on a scale of one to ten, how important is having a local police department cover your city or contract, you know, or contract with a county? Those were kind, it kept coming up to me that um, more than anything. And so I'm thinking that I'm ready to move on, that we do need to make a decision. I do appreciate what we've been doing and I want to use that going forward though, as we define our coverage and where we can be to grow and be stronger. That level of service, I think it is important we define that level of service that the citizens desire and deserve. Costs and the timeframe that will get to get us there and a funding mechanism if it's not within our own budget. Kept coming up retaining police officers. Um, we have a retention issue. We have a uh, a lateral hiring issue. We have a leadership. I think we have seen that, we've identified that. Um, I think we have a new council. I think we're ready to try to develop and a a department that we can be proud of and grow with. Um, and it just keeps coming back to that. At the very beginning, I looked at all the options and I, everything kind of was out there. But everything I'm looking at now keeps me thinking, and from what I'm hearing, that that's where our citizens want us to be. That was just two cents.
Yeah, and I think, you know, through the discovery process, I think we all have a very clear picture of what a, what contracted services would look like for us. Um, what I don't think we yet have a clear picture of, and I guess I would ask, you know, the interim um, safety um
Ryan.
Director. Ryan. To offer for us is, is maybe, yeah, can we get a better picture of what success for this department will look like? Because the other thing I don't want to do is say, well, we've done this discovery, let's um, just keep doing what we've been doing. Because it's been a revolving door in the department and I think our police officers deserve better than that. If we want to retain them, we have to create, we have to create the roadmap for success. And so um, if it's the right time to pause and ask for that from the city, what does success look like and how will we achieve it? Then I think that's a great next step. We do need to give you direction on what your target is. What are we asking you, what level of service are we asking you to strive for?
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I agree. I I think that it is appropriate to put together a strategic plan and present it to the council. So you guys are very clear on where we're going and and our plan to get there, which I believe we absolutely, I've said it before, I think we can get there. It's going to take time, it may take funding. It's achievable. I mean, you got great folks over there now. I mean, you got all the ingredients, it's just putting it together for, you know, in a successful way. And I think that we can do that. Um, we've identified some of the problems in the past. I think we're cleaning that up. And uh, I, again, I think if this thing is put to bed, I mean, we're going to hit the ground running tomorrow morning. Got openings that we're just waiting for a a decision to be made. If that decision is made tonight, then I, I mean, we're doing it tomorrow. Um, I talked with the uh, Counselor Miller and he's agreed to help me with the strategic plan. So it's something that, you know, the council can have an input on exactly what you're looking for. And I'm confident that we can put that together and move forward.
I just had, I appreciate that proposal, Councilor Holmes. I do have a a concern about the word pause though. We're gonna, we're gonna lose officers if we just label it as on pause, meaning we could go back and push play on it. Um, there's not anyone on this council that would apply for a job where the company's looking at a merger. And we have to decide on on whether to to close this or.
But it, yeah, I I would like to hear from others if they've got opinions. Um, but I I think we need to put, we we have to do something different.
Sure.
Going forward. And I think we need to define what that is and we need to see what that looks like before we say we're all done here. I don't know. What do others think?
I I don't think we're going to be saying we're all done for a while. We've had three police chiefs in less than ten years, I believe. Um, we do a lot of training of staff and then they go somewhere else. So that revolving door is very expensive, so we're going to have to figure that out. I don't know if contracting services actually solves any of that fundamentally. It's still local policing challenges. Yeah, I, I, I think it would be having the certainty of the local as we get a new city manager. And if we find the right people, that's going to be the critical thing. I just don't, it's a bad look to have a fourth police chief in ten years.
It is.
Councilor Santiago.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilor Holmes uh, for all your hard work because you did put a lot of time, your personal time in this uh, uh, you know, to, to look into it. And I, we, I personally appreciate that, thank you. Um, I think that I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that we are all are needing a plan. Myself, I do need a a plan to figure this out. Being that I've been in the council about a year and a half, two years, I was, and I'm so glad that this is a whole new council. Where we, it seems like it's very different from the council that when I entered. Um, but what I think is that we need to not just think about the chief, but also our leader, our next leader, which is a city manager, has to be a strong city manager that we need to recruit, someone that's going to be transparent and with the council on what's going on with the police department. Because I think that was the problem, that has been the problem and the issue. We, as a council, did not know what was going on and there was no transparency. So we uh, we as residents of Scappus, we were hearing things outside the chambers and on on our police department, and that's not good. So we need to come in uh, and make sure that a city manager is clear on sharing everything that's good and bad and the ugly with the police department. I think that we need to see how we can work that out with the new um, city manager. And I love the idea of the strategic plan because if we keep doing the same thing over and over, that's just, that's not going to work. So um, I am personally, I am for uh, keeping the, the police department and looking into that with the conditions of having a strong strategic plan, getting a, a strong uh, city manager that would hire a strong chief. And and then that would be transparent with the council.
Thank you, Councilor Santiago. Um, so I'm hearing it and like you had mentioned, Councilor Friends, about the word pause. Um, what would, what definition, what would make you feel comfortable or do you need one? Can we vote to move on with the local police department pending the strategic plan and potential survey of level of service that we want to maintain with a local police department? And just go forward with that?
I mean, going back to the goal three point three, it stated, remember word for word, but explore this. And and so I feel comfortable that that we have explored it. Um, and so I just, I think po, using anything that suggested that this was just on hold would would set us back tremendously.
Okay, uh, so my idea of a strategic plan is that uh, it would address, you know, what we have funding for now and um, how we, how we utilize what we have now. When I say now, I mean, we have uh, eight funded patrol officer positions, two sergeants, one lieutenant and one chief. Um, now, some of the public probably is aware of this, but we've had issues within our PD where um, it has caused some of those folks to go on admin leave. And so they're being paid, but uh, they can't work. So that was one of the big concerns that this council had. However, um, as we move through the motions of clearing those up and we actually get those positions uh, working, um, like the city would like, um, I do think that we can get to twenty four seven, three sixty five coverage. It may not be two on at all times, but as we already know, the sheriff's office does have um, patrol deputies on twenty four seven. So at least our officers have cover until we can get the funding and figure out a plan, which I would hope the strategic plan will address um, for how we can have our own officers. Because ideally, uh, we do, for me, I do want to see uh, two police officers on duty at all times within the city limits. I think that's a safety issue for our police officers. And I think that um, just common sense tells us if somebody's in our city limits and there's an emergency within our city limits, that our local police officers within that area are going to be able to respond a lot quicker. And it's just a matter of time before those emergencies happen, especially as we grow. Um, so I'd, I'd, uh, all that to say, I don't think that we need to pause. I think that if this council has enough information at this time to go forward and just say, uh, we're going to do the strategic plan using the internal PD model. Um, I think uh, as you heard earlier, Brian, I agreed to help Brian with the strategic plan. I think we can come up with something really great and that this council can be very proud of.
Q President, also President Miller. Um, yeah, I mean, I see us too. We have signed an intergovernmental agreement with the county. Um, we are building that relationship. I think it will be a good partnership. They train, they help fill, train our officers. I think we can continue that um, and build that relationship. But I do, we need to do something tonight and move on. Are we ready to take either a vote or a thumbs up, thumbs down, ready to move on? And let's um, focus on keeping as an internal police department while developing a strategic plan moving forward and working on the budgets for this year and next?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we close the exploration into contracting with the sheriff's office with the expectation that there's a strategic plan uh, in place.
Any seconds?
If I may to amend that with the police department providing their recommendation of what twenty four seven coverage is, potentially before the strategic plan is complete, so we can have that discussion here. But putting that on you guys, what is twenty four seven, what is the level of service that you would try to achieve in that strategic plan?
Well, I think it's
The PD said that.
It's going to be a multi-layered, right? Where we're at now, where we're going to be in, you know, two years and where we're potentially want to be in five years. I mean, I think ideally, yeah, we get as many cops on as we can, as often as we can ideally. Um, but the reality is, is I think we first go towards being fully staffed and fully operational, which would give us twenty four seven coverage. If that's what we choose to do with it, as opposed to maybe heavy loading the day shift, the swing shift and and going super light night. Um, but yeah, absolutely. I think right now we are technically at twenty four seven coverage. If you call us at three o'clock in the morning and there's an emergency, we're getting, a cop's going to show up. Um, so that technically, in my opinion, is twenty four seven coverage. Now, what is it that we're really talking about? We're talking about having a cop in Scappus on duty all time, which we're not there yet. That's, I think, the common twenty four seven coverage. Um, again, if we're, once we become fully operational, which, I mean, I'm working with uh, um, city, city manager Lehman and we're, we're trust me, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we can get fully operational. There's some legal things that we have to jump through, of course. Um, but we're, we're working at it. But that strategic plan will address where we're at now, where hopefully we're going to be at in a year, two, three, we'll probably go out up to five years. Um, with where we need to be given the the city. I mean, but as we know, the city's growing and with, you know, an increase in population is going to be increase of speeders, it's going to be an increase of crime, all that, all those things that come with it. Um, which, you know, I'll work with Councilor Miller will address in the strategic plan. Did I answer your question or did I just mumble?
Uh, you made a really long amendment. So with that amendment, I would, I would say
It wasn't intentional.
That amended motion. I don't know personally how that happens, but.
Yeah, well, I'm hearing a motion by La Friends mainly to um, focus on internal police department moving forward and how we can um, build a strategic plan. We need to define twenty four seven and and the numbers of officers that we have within our budget and come up with a plan going forward internally. It's work, yes.
Right, if I may. So if we are removing the whole pause concept, there's really no hurry here to get the strategic plan done. So we, uh, Public Safety Director, sure, yeah, I got the title right. Jensen and I um, can work on, you know, the baseline, what we think the council is really going to like. But we can bring it back and we can have constructive dialogue about what this, the strategic plan looks like with all of council. So it's, it's, there, there's no rush to get it done. I mean, we'll get it done in a timely manner, but the point being is because there's nothing uh, holding, advancing the internal PD um, up now, we, we have time to have that dialogue with council.
So I guess the only decision we're really making, are we, are we good with moving forward with our local police department? And not talk contracting with Columbia County at this time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we close the discovery of contracting our police services with Columbia County Sheriff's Department.
We have a motion, um, first since Andrew, Councilor La Friends's motion, we never got a second. So that dies.
Was it amended? I I didn't understand the, if it was amended.
Got the layers there.
Okay, we were going with Counselor La Friends's motion and um, that motion died.
How is that different?
Motion by Counselor Jacobs.
But how is that different from Counselor La Friends?
Okay.
We know that the strategic plan is something
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Motion is to close the discovery process on contracting our police services with Columbia County Sheriff's.
So Counselor Friends, you have a motion on the table to close the contracting with Columbia County, contracting um, and develop a strategic plan with our local police department.
Yes, and I'll second that.
It's fine, we can make a sec, we can make a second motion if council would like about being a strategic plan.
I second that about this, the strategic plan.
We're just going back to the first one.
Okay, we
Two motions.
Two motions.
Two different motions.
Andrew, Counselor Friends has a motion on the table to um, I don't want to say table, I don't want to say closed talks, contracting talks with Columbia County Sheriff's Department. Any seconds?
Second.
Second, we'll go second by Counselor Bailey. Any more discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
But now, you know, going forward, we're staying with our local internal police department.
It's great news, they'll be very happy.
We appreciate it, thank you. I do want to, I did write down here and I thought, the thought of contracting had nothing negative to do with our current officers and leadership. It really had to do the loss of officers in the past, officers we'd have trouble with in the past leadership. So that cut, for me, it was nothing to do with the great officers and people we have working for. Um, did we want to entertain a motion then to ask the low, our internal police department to work on a strategic plan and forward?
This staffing action required? So, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion um, that council approve the police department to work on a strategic plan with a recommendation for the appropriate level of service over time.
Counselor Holmes has a motion on the table to develop, the police department develop a strategic plan um, moving forward.
I second.
Councilor Santiago, seconds. Any discussion? My discussion, I think we're doing this because like Counselor Holmes says, this is going to require some staff time and some money and time involved. And so we want to make sure it's on the record that we're approving this to give you that. and some money and time involved, and so we want to make sure it's on the record that we're approving this to give you that. Any, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on. We do have our senior updates, Scappus Senior Center update. Should have probably moved you ahead of them. Clara, if you'd like to come up. Just a quick recap, we do put $20,000 into the budget for the Scappus Senior Center. And early in the year, we paid, I think it was roughly $6,000 for a study through Portland State to have, help you guys work with your board, do a evaluation of the senior center, go over some things there to help you. Since then, why don't you give us an update?
I can do that. As you know, I'm Clara Pell. I'm president of the Board of the Scappus Senior Center. And I think one of our best moves since 2021, which we have not really had a treasurer on our board, we now have Sherry Quarry, who is a local businesswoman, bread and breakfast by the airport. And she has a very sound financial background, which we are all very pleased to have her. She is excellent on, on financial reports. As you know, we've had problems with our taxes in the past. And I think Isaac received one of these reports, so we have the first quarter going into '21, '24, and she's now into, let's see, what's after that, the next two months. So she's coming along on the 23 taxes. So I'm very pleased to have her. The senior center is very pleased. Now, when we had Sam, who was prior to Sherry, he was very organizational and we have very, we have implemented very good cash flow procedures between the Bread Place, the Thrift Store, and the Center. We do, we now have, we're in the process of switching from Juana, or from Chase to Juana and Scappus, which will make our daily deposits, which we've been doing. We have two accounts moved to Juana, our Bingo and our general account. And we plan on moving as soon as Sherry is going to be okay, I will get into moving the rest of the accounts over to Juana and Scappus. Our taxes, our state and financial taxes are filed for all three years. That's a big plus for us, because we've had a lot of problem with our taxes and the Department of Justice and all that past stuff. And a big plus today, Bingo started tonight, so-
You're missing it.
Thank you. I'm very, I'm not there, by the way.
I know.
Well, all of them things are great, but I want to read to you, if I have time, our treasurer's goals for April of '24, short term by end of June. Getting current year financials caught up, which she's doing. Developing capital, improving budget procedures for tracking capital projects. Have next year's fiscal year's operating budget in place, so we're working on budgets. Develop long-term, develop a document portfolio for grant writing, which I've been doing with Pete up to a point. Well, we're working on that. And identify project needs for grants. Ongoing, develop or revise accounting procedures as needed. I'm very happy to have Sherry. Now, bylaws, we took your recommendation and we have hired the nonprofit lawyer from the Center, I think is Eugene, and Zachary Kolenowski. We sent him our bylaws and he has given us many revisions. Now, we're still working on that. Tomorrow, we have a work session, which we are going to go over his revisions. And then we will get back to him on, on how the board feels about the revision. We do need some changes there, that I understand. Planning ahead, we now have, I'm getting into the food area now. Our Wednesday lunches are now going to be also on Friday. We're planning ahead on our Friday lunches, so going to be checking into another cook. These are part-time cooks. We can't afford full-time cooks yet. So we'll be doing that Thursday. And volunteer-wise, as far as the kitchen goes, we have plenty of volunteers, surprisingly. And that was one of my, one of my duties, that was to work on getting volunteers, and somehow they all managed to come. Now, maintenance issues, the Bread Place roof has been repaired. Portfolio, we will start, the Portico repairs will be starting this Saturday. Activities, we're going gung ho on them. We've got exercise-to-exercise classes. Cribbage, bus trips are planned, bunko. Any questions?
Siri, you looking for CDL drivers to drive your bus?
Yes, we are. We have, we have Mark Livingston. He's our bus driver, but he's going to Florida for a month or two. So we need a, we need a couple of extra spare bus drivers, yes. They have to be CDL.
So you talked about bylaws. You spend some of the money we gave you for attorney, your bylaws updates. Is it around $5,000? No?
No, it was 500 for him to revise, to go over the bylaws.
So money from the city, the 6,000 for the PSU study and this 500, that's all the money that you've, we've sent, given to you?
Yes.
We had talked about wanting to get Bingo up and running, to get the taxes going, and to kind of hear before we just cut a check. But we are up against the budget, right? We're looking at it, so we have to make a decision on the remaining amount of money. Does anybody have any recommendations? Is there anything you guys are needing? It sounds like you have, I mean, you have a lot of projects that can all use money.
Well, we received a grant from the PUD for the Bread Roof, the Bread Place Roof. We have a personal donation for the Portico. It doesn't totally cover it, but it covers a good portion of it. Our finances are good. So we can cover whatever expenses we have.
We do have, until June 30th, to use this year's budget money.
So, in my recommendation, is there anything you could think of that you could use that balance for that we could help with? You don't have to, tonight, you have time to think about or ask.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, or an expense, your attorney, your tax bill, stuff that we might be able to help you with.
Well, we're still over our accountant, because we're sort of haggling over a few things with her. But she did get them all processed and filed.
And in some years in the past, we just wrote them a check, if that's right, Isaac. We'd just write them a check for whatever we'd agreed on, and they could use it for whatever they deemed. They'd come back and maybe thank us and tell them, tell us what it went for. This year, because of the issues, we recommend, we pushed the PSU study and help and some of these other bylaw updates and things that we thought would be beneficial before we just cut a check. So if any councils have any ideas or thoughts for them, questions now?
One question for Carol. What's left in the remaining budget for this year?
I'm going to have to go, I'm going to have to, I didn't come prepared with that, but I can have that for you.
About 14, 13.
More importantly, maybe, to make sure that Claire knows, yeah.
So I can certainly get you that, whatever's left this year. I know we did a couple of reimbursements, and so I just want to make sure I gave you the right numbers.
Yep.
That's what we've done. This year, we've done everything pretty much as reimbursements you've been sending us, but you spent, and we've reimbursed you for it, so.
Okay. Well, that's a thought, I think, for next month or two, and if, we'd love to help you guys out a little more. Pete, you had a question?
I think that's-
You wanted to get on a microphone? Well, Jeanette won't hear you unless you're-
In the past, that the funds were, as was stated, were given to the senior center and we used them and we sent a report in how we'd use those funds. But I think what we're really asking for is that for the remainder of those funds to be provided to the senior center. And the idea that we got to, you know, identify each thing we're going to spend the remainder of that money on is not something that we're, we're used to doing. We have a whole bunch of things we need to spend the money on, and we'd rather, if you just give us the money, we would put it to good use. I mean, we have a really good treasurer and good financial controls over what we're doing at this point. And I think that, and we've, you've given us those, I think, six things that we were supposed to do, and we've done all those. And so I think at some point, just write us a check.
That's actually what, actually what Larry and I just, that's what Larry and I were just talking about.
I think that's where we kind of sat on our last one, is once Bingo got up and running, and it's up and running. And the lunches have been great. I've went to one. They're really filling up and you guys are doing a good job. So I feel the same as Pete.
Then, is the direction then to staff is go ahead and cut them the balance?
We need a motion.
I will email you all the numbers that's left.
Do you want to know that before I make a motion? I make a motion to re, cut them a check for senior center for the remaining balance.
The $20,000.
The $20,000 that we budgeted for them. And they will use it as they see fit and give us a report back at a later time.
I second.
So, sorry.
Second by Council Santiago.
For discussion, at the next council meeting, Carol, can we please get an update on how much that remaining balance was? Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
You before then.
Okay, thank you.
As a discussion point on that, you know, report at a later time. We may want to just put more, you know, structural on the report of, you know, the quarterly finances, something of that nature, just for ongoing for the next period of time, just belt and suspenders. But otherwise, I have no, no problems.
Speaking from the new senior center liaison, I think you'll be at their meetings and we'll be- No, but we do have a liaison. We will give you a liaison that will be able to come back and report back things that you guys are doing. So thank you.
I will continue to give you financial reports.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
I thank all of yous very much. I really, we really appreciate.
And I do think in the contract, we were having our city manager come to your meetings and be part of it. I think we'd like to still continue to do that if we see fit with the new city manager. It works well with their schedule, and I know Larry enjoys.
Especially if they could go on Wednesdays.
Yeah. Wednesday, no more Fridays. Thank you, Clara.
You both?
There was no voting.
Okay, any more discussion? Discussion. Any, seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Thank you. Okay, last one. This should be brief. Need a clock. I, council discussion on committees, this is one that I kind of have, didn't really write a lot for the staff report, but we have two standing committees. One that we're responsible for up here, Parks and Rec Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Each committee has a county, council liaison. Parks and Rec liaison is Marissa Jacobs and Economic Development Committee liaison is Jeanette Santiago. Kind of what I'm looking at, I've been watching and being overseeing or being part of these committees and watching for the last 15 months. And I'm asking for a discussion on these committees. Kind of discussion on the council liaison role and responsibilities with these committees. These are our committees, so what is our vision for these committees? What is the function and purpose that council sees for these committees? Are the agendas determined? How much staff time is dedicated to these committees? And one, it comes up a lot, is this council tasks the committees with things to do? Or do the committees propose and recommend tasks for them to do themselves? Or as I see, it's usually a combination of both. In your packet, you see the resolutions that were adopted late October of 2021, before I came in. And so I just kind of wanted to talk, I have spoke with Council Jacobs and Council Santiago about it. And so I just kind of wanted to touch base. I think these committees are important and I want to maximize their potential. At the same time, you know, use staff appropriately. And staff needs, wants to understand their role. Because, you know, if we assign these committees, then that is assigning staff to help with them and do, and spend time and money on them. So I just kind of wanted to touch base, especially since we've just, Jacobs is a new liaison to Parks and Rec and Jeanette has just moved over to economics. So I kind of wanted to touch base and talk to you guys a little bit about your thoughts going forward for these committees.
So, during our conversation with the mayor and Council Santiago, we were chatting about how do we want to activate the committees and make them feel that they're contributing to the greater, the betterment of the community. And I think where we came out of that conversation was really, we have these two committees that can greatly impact our area and all of them come with a great set of skill sets. And we should utilize these talented individuals. But how do we go about doing that in a thoughtful manner? As it relates to Parks and Rec, my idea is that while I'm the liaison to council with staff, and I'm sorry, with council and as well as to the committee, committee, I would like to see the committee thriving more within the framework of our master plan. So we have completed a Parks master plan. That provides the direction and guidance and how the community, how we want to advance and develop the park system. And we have a public works director, Dave Sukow. And he also has a body of work that he needs to move forward. So I'd like to be able to, for us to be able to help prioritize, what are the critical things that we're trying to get after over the next year? What are the, what are the five projects, let's say? Out of those five projects, you take that back, in this case, I would take that back, to the Parks Committee and say, here's the five projects. And here's where you can start. With partnership of our public works director to say, okay, for priority number one, project number one, here's the things that would be most beneficial if you guys could work on. And then they work through identifying what all the elements are for that project, and then that gets handed over to the public works director. And then they pick it up and take it. Maybe there's a little bit of a back and forth. But I think if we're able to round and root ourselves in our master plan and prioritize and move it forward, I think there'll be better engagement and involvement with the committee members and a sense of accomplishment. I really would not, I don't want to see us just go to a meeting on a monthly basis to have a conversation, have a conversation, to keep going around in conversations. That's not beneficial use of time. So that's how I would like to see our committees activated, is it's a joint partnership. I mean, we're guiding and directing, but they're participating and they're helping to bring these things to life.
Thank you. Council Santiago, hanging on your side?
Thank you. I agree with Council Jacobs in as far as, you know, the direction that we both have in mind for our, for these two committees. They are great, talented individuals. They're very committed. And, and they're, yes, they have great ideas and they're very opinionated. But I think the ultimate, what I kept hearing from the committees is, especially the EDC, was, why are we here? What's the purpose of this committee? And, and it's been something that has been going on for, gosh, years, I would, I would say. So we have lost also good committee members because of the lack of direction throughout the years, and I don't want to see that happen. So the EDC is working on an economic development strategic plan of what they plan to, how they plan to support the economic growth in Scappus. This is nothing like, you know, not, not technical, we're not going to be something- You know, not not technical. We're not going to be something that we need a consultant for. This is something that the group With their um combined talents that they have. See what they can do as individuals, as as residents of of scampus can do for for the city. And so I also would like to be the more in between. So for example, like Come, you know, assisting with the agenda, with the liaison and the committee Uh chair or co-chair and then any of the questions, directions would be going to the liaison. I would like the staff just to be there to no take. Not necessarily go back and forth and answer questions. So if any questions that the committee may have, I would like it to be directed more to the liaison. And then if we don't have that answer information, we'll can't come back or we have input, we'll take it back to the council. So that's kind of how I would like to structure and moving forward on those meetings. Um so staff would be there again to no take. And then and then the liaison would be more the in between and and then moving and then working with the committee.
Thank you. So I do see um if staff Has questions or comments during their meeting to really direct them towards the liaison versus staff. And let the liaison And determine if they can answer them or if they're going to have to go back to council to get more direction or or question. Or if they know a staff member that may know. If it is a question that Dave may know the specifics, you know, let the council, let the liaison Invite that. I do see, you know, it does show that The that we will send a secretary or someone to open the the room, turn on the lights, get the recording going, keep summary minutes. But they may not be very involved in the operations of that meeting. And the agendas will be determined by the liaison and the chair. In council, I do want us kind of more involved. Maybe if liaison can come to council To get some direction or if there's questions, ask us because um We want to task the committees with stuff to do so they do feel like they're being listened to. And that also then kind of dictates some staff time Um that might be needed to research. I do have an in uh in the thing I do want to bring up is some decorum. We have had issues over the years. And just respectful and um to each and every staff member and Committee members and public, because they are all public meetings and and quite a few people do listen and watch them. And so We do, I do, I wanted to make sure I noted that for sure. But I think these committees can be good. I just think they need direction and I think the strategic plan for the EDC is good. It's actually in their bylaws. So I want to make sure that you guys, that they feel that they've got all the information they need to move forward on that. And that is one that I think they're working well with staff on and and developing that um strategic plan.
Your honor, if I, if I could
Yes.
Just for clarification. Uh so my understanding then is the the liaisons will will operate with the the committees. And uh so the desire for the city staff, we simply to uh facilitate the meeting. Open up the room and have someone uh take minutes and so forth, meaning then that the department heads don't don't need to be there. And so I don't know why they, I mean, then then the liaison would we would go back to that department head or whatever they need to do in order to facilitate the activity.
Yeah, I think it's um I think we should start with that intention. But there may be a week where one of the department heads Need to come. After having thorough conversations on here, we're trying to work through this project. We've got some questions. We can't get it resolved through the liaison. It would be best suited for Public Works Director to come for thirty minutes. But but I think really we want to try to For the for the liaisons to really be that Under it. To help Limit the number of touchpoints. And consolidate the information to bring back to the committee.
And I think that absolutely if if the council member, the liaison requests, let's say, a department to be there to certain meeting to do certain things, absolutely no question about that. Uh I don't think we want to have uh development is there just just sitting there.
Correct.
It's just if if not needed.
Correct.
Now, definitely they would be there if you desire them and it is a purpose.
Definitely, yeah. I mean, if if we need Sukow there to go over a prioritization of parks, he's invited and he's well aware way before the meeting what they're going to be going over. Same with Lori, if it needs to come in on on a master plan or strategic plan or downtown overlay. You know, they'll be invited and be part of it.
Um Christine, do you still have a Hold on one second. So um Jeanette can hear you, but I have a comment really quick. I just want to make sure that um What the procedure is though for requesting city staff so that everybody can be on the same page with that. So let's say that Marissa uh requests that um Dave uh be present at the next meeting is you can Is Marissa expected to make that request to you as a city manager or can she make that request directly to the Public Works Director?
I think she can make it directly. Either way, doesn't matter. Uh so if she wanted to go directly, I have no problem with that. Or if she want, if she wanted the city manager to do that, we could do that too.
Council Santiago.
I would prefer to go directly to this, through the city manager on that.
Okay, and no problem.
In the past, that was kind of uh we, you know, and we'll have a new city manager in a few months. We'll discuss this again, but Go to you and explain and then you can If you see it fit to invite them.
I just
They're there.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page so we know what the SOP is here because these committees keep coming up as issue On a regular, let's say, regular basis, but at least annually. So the more that we can clarify and get better um SOP and Clarity on things, I think the better at this point.
I appreciate that, Council Miller.
Christine Turner, Chair of the EDC.
The only time we do have We have a partnership updates from different community members. So we do have a city update, whether Isaac used to do it or NJ currently does it and sometimes Lori does it. But that's really the only time someone from the city, every other month, somebody from the city comes and does a little report for us. That's part of the premise of EDC is so we can report out that information to other community members.
I still see that as valuable, whether it it comes from NJ brings it and reads it or an email to you ahead of time if they can't make it or But they want to give you updates on what local business has been going on and what's been happening. Um same with parks. But um meeting, I, you know, it does say in our bylaws quarterly, at least quarterly and more if needed. I'd stick with that. And if there's important meetings that need to be done. And and can be and things can get accomplished, I I definitely have those meetings.
And I I think it probably goes without saying, but I'll just say it for clarification, city manager, when we talk about responsibility of staff hoping, like opening up The doors, getting the meeting right, that would also be publishing the agenda. But the agenda will be on The responsibility of the chair and the liaison in terms of crafting the agenda. But the publishing of the agenda onto the website. We could have staff do that for us still.
Correct. Now, I I don't mean to be funny, but also if I was going to have the committee, I'd say make coffee too. No, no.
Really?
Yeah.
Donuts?
No. No, there's there's no reason why we we could not do that.
Thank you.
Marissa, can we be clear on this though? Because I I just see this um It could be an issue.
Okay.
Who is going to do the agenda? The liaison or the chair?
So I I, what I believe the order of operation should be is that the chair Working with their committee creates the agenda. And they can Send it to the liaison for a review. And then that would be signed off by the liaison to then move to forward to the city.
Okay.
That's 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 exactly what we discussed. Yes.
You have concern about that, Council Miller?
I do not. I just
Okay, I know, I appreciate it.
I I appreciate the clarity as well.
That's what I was going to ask. Does that work? Um JJ or Mike's not here, but
That is the preference that we create our own agenda and have it approved by Jeanette.
And you guys all are very aware of deadlines to publish this stuff. Okay, I just want to make sure that
I'm just trying to see if you wanted to work on something and does it need to And it needs to go to council. Usually you're trying to have the agendas pretty
We have our goals.
A week before.
Like we know what directions we're going in. We've been having meetings, which I don't think are necessary, where you and City manager are included. I don't think that's necessary.
Good. Same with me. You come up to a microphone. Jeanette, I'll let you, Council Santiago.
Well, I just also want to um point out that that uh when's the agenda and it's being the liaison could Could say, you know what, it, I don't see that there's a really need for this meeting. So just For clarity, just wanted to know that the liaison could say We need, we don't see a need for this particular meeting next, you know, coming up.
Uh I would object to that. I think that if the The committee wants to have a meeting because we have something that we would like to discuss, I think that we should be able to continue our meetings.
But that's the whole point of having this, the liaison review, the the agenda.
If there's something you want to just give information that can think of it, if it can be done in an email Versus discussion back and forth and a decision potentially. Those would be for meetings if it was Just to meet, to explain. I'm just trying to come up with examples of just meeting to meet.
Well, we don't set policy. So we are always just meeting to meet in a certain way. Um with a goal of being whatever the goal is that we're working on. So for instance, we want to, we've want to come to you with an idea. And to get that idea bigged, we need to talk about it. But we never set policy. So we don't really even make a lot of decisions. There might be a tree that we say, okay, if we want the end result to be, we A good plan would be this, we might go through that plan or ideas around that plan. I think what she's saying is it will be tough To have sporadic meetings. I think We're all professionals. We have time that we try to put in the calendar, like this is when it is. You know, getting deciding a week beforehand, we're not going to have it because whatever. I think it's up to us to have an agenda that's robust enough that it makes sense for us to meet.
I have something on that, but Sue, Dave Sukow.
Yeah, I have obviously lots of input on this as I've watched the Parks Committee develop over the last seven and a half years. Change the way it operates. And I always go back to, I guess, for clarity, you know, these committees are advisory committees to council and I guess You know, confirming that with those of you would be great. Uh my other question would be as if I'm going to be on an invite basis. Those agendas usually aren't created that I'm aware of until mere days before the meeting. Um that doesn't leave a lot of time to get on calendars if that's going to be the protocol we're going to continue. Or if you're going to try to target those agendas like a month in advance or, you know, a little Little more forethought into what those are going to look like.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think um I think that can be done when it's coming up to you and talking about parks. Talking me to me, you're right, you guys are going to talk and discuss because you want to present something to council. So you need to talk and discuss about it. About your proposal that you will then make. So if that is the meeting to talk about a proposal, you're I'm just keep thinking like Dave, you could come up with prioritization of of next, the parks and how we can bring you and them into that. We'll invite you and that may be a month out. You may know that a month ahead of time, like in two months, we're going to meet and talk about that.
In all honesty, it's my intent to be at every meeting. I I unless you want me to be at an invite only, I will do my best to be at everyone. I'm completely open.
I think they would appreciate you there as much as you possibly can.
Well, if you want to be there every month, uh Mr.
Or online or
You are more than welcome to come. Um we're just trying, I was just trying to think of ways to create some bandwidth for you. And how maybe we could work a little bit more Like I said, just to create more bandwidth for you and and get a little bit more efficient in how we're meeting and what we're meeting about. Um and bringing you in where it's uh critical. Creating a a point of contact for you versus having seven points of contacts.
I I completely, I completely appreciate that. Where my fears are, and I'd be curious to see how your new liaison approach works. Because in the past, what's ended up happening is the staff member that is facilitating the meeting is getting backed into the corner on some very Heated questions and it's been very uncomfortable for that position. Um so I've usually been trying to make it there to take that heat off of our staff members because usually those are At one point, it was interns that were were doing that role and um You know, people who don't have the ability to make a judgment call and it just hasn't been very fair to them. So I'm I'm really intrigued by the new liaison Dynamic here. And and if that works and I don't need to be there, then I appreciate that too.
May I just uh back to what I just want to talk about. So both, I'm in both committees. Both committees are quite different. The EDC, there's no head of EDC in staff. So We, our goal is to hopefully come up with enough interesting ideas to eventually present to council. And that's pretty much it. Parks are a lot different because Dave is the head of parks. So in the past, and uh some of these counselors have been on these committees, there's been a disconnect. So for instance, There's some extra money and then Dave goes in front of staff At city council with an idea that on parks that we've never even heard of. And so like there's a disconnect because Dave didn't talk to us. We had no idea what was going on. So Um like we're working on something, like for instance, we just had a lot of feedback from from citizens that they want this, 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 this and this. And then something else comes from the other side. And then conversely When Dave has been in the meetings, what we feel is a great role for us is we want, we are the citizens, like we can help you with decisions. If you need us to go out and say What is, ask more citizens, what is more important to you? Is it this or this or this? We could help him decide. What's been great with Dave being uh more connected with us is Dave has said, hey, we have Ideas around pickleball, for instance, and since I, some of us on the group play pickleball. We came back to him with research on uh from the USASA Pickleball Association on on what it would take to build pickleball courts, what the costs are. What the uh what they recommend for distances, etc. That hopefully took some time uh that he didn't have to work on. And that has been really successful. So I would love to have Dave continue because his his role is a lot different than the EDC uh section because there's not a EDC lead in the staff. If Dave is interested in doing it, because I I think if we continue to work together, we could be much more functional and be very supportive of Dave To take some load off from him. Um I mean, Dave, I'd love your feedback on that.
No, Paul, I a hundred percent agree with you. Um you know, I I just go back to originally, we were Individual conduits through council. And if we can partner on the front end, I think that that definitely helps streamline things. Um at the end of the day, for the big decisions, obviously that will still go before council. But if we're both in agreement, when we do that, I think It definitely cleans things up. But no, I agree, Paul, the the pickleball thing and and now we're we're working on a Reduced version of Grabhorn right now that we're going to be talking about this Thursday and and different dynamics. So I think right now, yeah, we're we're on the right track.
Question I have there, Dave, is kind of what Council President Miller had brought up though about SOP is Do you know, if you have something, do you come to council or liaison and say, I think I have something that the Parks and Rec can help us with? Or, you know, here's something I'm thinking and then the liaison will work with you and decide on bringing in the Parks and Rec or are you going to go straight to The Parks and Rec and say, you know, you guys should look at this, we'll do it at the next meeting. What is a good operation procedure there that works? That you go to council uh or liaison and then you work through her To get into the parks and the parks does the same. They go to Marissa, Council Jacobs. If they have something for you or do they go directly to you?
I think that's for you guys to dictate in all honesty. I mean, if however, however you want to put the trust in us to do that. I'm open, I'm open to whatever. I mean, pre- previously, we we had staff, you know, if it's a small thing, it's maintenance projects, it's whatever. We make those decisions without you. But when it comes time to talk about capital improvements, we've always come before council for for that approval. And in previous Parks Committee, when I first hired on, the committee did the same thing on the committee did the same thing on their own recourse. They put together their ideas and came to council and said, hey, we really want this thing. And then that would be redirected through the city manager to staff. If we want to refocus that, and it's what I'm hearing right now. You know, in partnership with the Parks Committee on the front end and then come to you, that's okay too. I just, I just want to follow whatever direction you all prefer.
And I'm, I'm in favor of our liaison working with the department head and the chair and determine what will work, what they feel will work best for this group and try to determine that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one more thing to this conversation? So having served in the Parks and Rec Committee, it can be frustrating, right? There has been a disconnect. It's, it's good to hear that that's improving between what staff is doing and what the Parks and Rec Committee is discussing and presenting to council. I, I, but we, we continue to struggle with these committees. And I see them working successfully in other cities. And I'm wondering if the League of Oregon Cities can be a resource to us. Like if there's a model that we should be looking at for how these groups are structured. You know, how information flows from the committees to council and staff, if, if there's just some successful framework that we might want to look at to inform. You know, as these groups continue to evolve and hopefully be successful because you all are very talented people and we're very lucky to have you and happy volunteer week, according to the proclamation. We appreciate you.
So I will do that. I will look that stuff up. Go ahead.
So I was going to just talk about that. Have, have we ever done a comparison to what other cities are doing with how we and our committees? There might be some great examples and framework out there for how we're or how we can improve our committees.
We have a committee we could put on that and.
Brian and I, I think you called on me. Brian and I have been on the Economic Development Committee since its inception and through the different city managers, we've acted differently. Prior city manager, two prior city managers was very involved in our committee and he was very motivated and economic development was very much his focus. So he was an active part in our committee, as was a former mayor. And then we changed city managers and then we kind of were just like left a flounder and it, they said, you know, figured out, go do you. And so we kind of tried to do us and then we then, we had a liaison, but we never saw that liaison. And then all of a sudden, we had Andrew and he started participating. And then we had a better connection with council and less connection with staff. And that actually helped us quite a bit. And so, you know, we're still evolving. So we're changing gears all the time, but I think we're making some headway over the last six months. I think we've started to do some really good things and work well together. And I would, I would hate to lose that and be limited by that.
To your point, Christine, so point of order really quick too, just for the city recorder who has to type all these out, or all these comments out and everything, if you can please identify when you're talking, especially. I think she knows your voice by now, Christine, either, but. Oh, right. Yeah. So to your point though, I, if we could get something like a policy for how we operate our committees, and I think the bases or the baseline for that start for that would be to see what other cities are doing, but we are going to have constant rotation of council members liaison, city man, hopefully not city managers like we have had. Move along so far, right? But that does illustrate a need for having policy on this issue.
Good, I agree. I will look up LOC and some county committees and if anybody else wants to as well. Basically, I'm going to just let the liaison take a little more ownership and see give that some time and, and come back and tell us how it went and what your, any changes or decisions that need to be made.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate all your work, help. Thank you. Some great person told me one time, healthy function dynamic. That's what we're trying to achieve. Okay, I think we're on to the calendar. Unless I missed something. Okay, we are on April. Good, I'm into May. May 6th, council work session at 6:00 PM, followed by council meeting at 7:00 PM. May 9th, planning commission at 7:00 PM, farmer's market 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, starts in May 11th, every Saturday. May 20th, council work session 6:00 PM, followed by council meeting at 7:00 PM. I missed EDC meeting, May 16th at noon and Parks and Rec at 6:00 PM on May 16th. May 23rd, planning commission at 7:00 PM. And May 27th, offices are closed and observance of Memorial Day. Okay, on to updates, interim city manager, Larry Lehman, anything?
I just would like to point that we are working hard with, with the police department and, and the police union. We're not there yet, but we're, we're, we seem to be getting closer, I think. And with the decision you made tonight, that, that'll give us more impetus to get this moving. Our goal is to come back with a, with a contract that you can, you would, that I think you're going to appreciate if we get it done. We were headed in this direction.
Do you foresee any executive sessions to talk about it beforehand or soon?
Not before, before the contract is signed, absolutely. And before, you have to approve that. Not yet. We're not to the point of saying, hey, this is what we think can go. But I would hopefully within the next couple of weeks and at least within the next month, we could do so. Our really goal is to have this done and everything settled before the end of June. And I'd like to know so far, so far there's been no attorneys involved.
Yes.
Haven't heard, I don't know if it's a good thing or bad thing. I haven't heard an attorney in a month.
Okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Police Department.
First, thank all of you for making a decision. I, I think that that is gonna, I think that staff is going to be happy that a decision was made. And I think that, that kind of able to move forward. I really appreciate the hard work you guys put in. I, again, I appreciate the decision, a, a decision was made tonight. Just a quick couple of updates. Officer McFarlane graduated from the police academy successfully. And has beginning, he has begun his FTEP training, his field training program. The sheriff's office is helping us out with that. St. Helens Police Department is also helping us out in a limited role. St. Helens Police, yeah. St. Helens Police Department and the sheriff's office and us have also got together. I met with the chief and the sheriff. And we're talking about putting together like a regional training thing. We've got a bunch of trainers in all these different departments just trained within their department. We see a benefit of just kind of putting together all of our resources, maybe be able to bring people in from outside of our county to help train and just make it more of a more of a global, I guess, type of training for our officers and deputies and other officers within the county. So I think it's going to be a good thing. It's in its infancy. But all of us were on board that it needs to be done and we're going to go ahead and go forward with that. So I think that's a really good thing. Sergeant Larson is getting ready to go to the Metro Sergeants Academy. What that is just real briefly is in the metro, the Portland metro area, they have what's called a sergeant's academy and it's all new sergeants go to that, just to kind of make sure everyone is on the same page. They do a lot of legal updates. What it means to be a sergeant, kind of the expectations and all that. I went through it years ago and it was fantastic. And you really meet a lot of other sergeants. So you have, now you have contacts you can call when you do get stumped on something. There's resources that you can call and kind of work through. So I think it's really going to benefit not only Sergeant Larson, but it's going to benefit our officers because he's going to come back, we better train, it's going to benefit the city. Speaking of training, we have increased our firearms training at the police department to an hour a month. What they've been doing in the past, they've been doing it three times a year. Firearms is one of those things. It's a very perishable skill. And it's kind of a low frequency, high liability issue. We really want to make sure that they're very well trained on that. Coming along with that is not only just the the physical aspect of shooting. But it's also going to include case law updates and de-escalation type of stuff. So we're really trying to make our guys and gals the best that they can be. And little tweaks like that, I think, help. I mean, we want to make sure that they're very well trained and we do have firearms instructors in the PD. We'll also be using firearms instructors from the county in St. Helens when they have the availability. So that's a good thing. We've also increased our defensive tactics training. Which again, goes along with de-escalation. It also has, I mean, cops sometimes do have to get physical with folks. But we, when they do that, we want to make sure, one, they're doing it fight and, and they're within their legal authority to do so. So I think, again, that's one of those things that we don't do a lot, thank goodness. But when we do do it, it could be a thing. So we want to make sure that they know their authority. We want to make sure that they could do it safely. Not only safely for them, but safely for the person that they have to use force upon. So we're increasing our, they're doing that bi-weekly now and officer, all the officers are attending that. As I know, they're all attending it. So it's been well received. That's about it right now.
I'd like to add that the chief is kind of working on a program also to make gun locks available to everyone in the community. At no cost. And so we'll get.
Yeah, we've got a bunch of gun locks. We're just going to start advertising, doing a better job of advertising that on our social media pages and maybe through a newsletter or something like that. But we do have the locks now. They're, again, they're going to be free to the public.
Thank you. Were you able to hire an officer since we made the decision earlier? Lateral, maybe lateral?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I was talking to a deputy earlier, so we've got 15 minutes.
All right. So thank you. Appreciate your hard work. First, Counselor Bailey, you have an update?
Nothing on my side.
Hey, we do that every month at the end of the month.
Surprise.
We did, I think Counselor Bailey will be the school liaison. We discussed that and that would be a good fit for him to take over Council Mil, or Gryson's position as a school liaison. So that will be good to hear from you on those updates. Counselor Jacob?
Yes. So happy tax day. Hope everybody got your taxes in, did all those filings. First, I would like to thank our interim city manager Lehman. I just want to say that I really appreciate you stepping into this role and for tidying up the house a bit and taking on some critical items and moving them through and creating some really good wins and capacity for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to thank Counselor Holmes, Counselor Holmes. You shepherded in a, a large project and you came under a lot of scrutiny and, and sort of took the, the brunt of all of that for all of council. And I just want to thank you for doing the hard work and for seeing it through in a transparent manner. And know that the work was not done in vain. It, it was done for the betterment of all of us. So thank you. Next, reminder, Earth Day. Earth Day is this Saturday. It's being held at Heritage Park. It's at 7:30 to 3:00. Please come. We have lots of fun events that are scheduled. There is going to be a raffle. We all like giveaways, 2:30 must be present. They're giving away electric bike. That's pretty amazing. And like electric tools, powered tools, I think. Did I get that right? I think so. So lots of fun things, friends, family, loved ones all come down sharing the joy. And then lastly, we do have a critical role that we're hiring, which is the city manager. And I think if anything, I hope tonight really sort of amplified the need for us to hire leadership. We have two critical roles really that we need hired within our city. It's the city manager and a police chief. And leadership is, is really critical. And I think if all of us going through here on council, it's going to be our responsibility to make that hire. And I think for all of us, just to keep in mind that yes, having good tactical skills is important. But you can teach tactical skills, you can teach things that you can learn in a book. What you can't teach is leadership. And that is really what our city needs.
Counsel LeFrent.
Yes. So just, I just want to clarify a couple of things. This, this conversation about contracting with the county was never for me and I don't think anyone else on the council about putting the SCAPU's police department against the county. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the county sheriff's office, the deputies, their staff. I had no concerns about their ability to perform the services that we were looking into. It was more about the, the, the strong belief and faith I have in our, our core police officers, our staff, our interim director, our lieutenant, Flan Allen. I, I just think we're in a unique opportunity where we can correct some of the mistakes of the past. And again, I, I also do want to clarify, no matter what your definition of 24/7 is, clearly there are differences, but I believe it or not, I do share the goal of getting two officers on patrol in SCAPU's. And I, I do agree with Sheriff Pixley that, you know, the, the levee has, has been great for the community, has only made our county safer, but we we do need to move towards that. I do think that the priority of making sure that our officers are safe be, because they have a, a second officer. The officer Burgland isn't going into a dangerous call at 10:00 PM on a Sunday because we're not fully staffed. So hitting that priority of getting fully staffed and then looking at 24/7. So thank you, Counselor Holmes. Thank you, Sheriff Pixley for for looking into this as well. Again, a lot of respect for the, the sheriff's office and thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
Yes, well, thank you for the acknowledgement of the work and thank you for everyone who participated in the process. It really was a lot of work to bring together. And I agree with you, it's not at all that it was for not, right? I think we are in a better place, having had the discussion arriving at developing a strategic plan. We're in a better place than we've probably seen. This department have real potential in a very long time. So thank you everyone for participating. I will say it is quite unfortunate, the discourse and the dialogue, I think, that devolved around this process. To the community, please reserve immediate judgment and try to continue to have constructive discussions and really base those discussions in facts. And I think we will all be able to move forward and continue to move forward in a very productive way. But I am excited to see what our police department can put forward for us and collaborating to support them. I would also note, the League of Oregon Cities is going to have their Region One meeting on May 3rd in St. Helens. Yep, fellow counselors, if you're able to make that, it's a lunchtime meeting. The discussion will be some of the challenges that cities are facing in terms of funding. Particularly with general fund, funding. So it's a timely discussion. It's something that I think all of us are struggling with. And so I would encourage you guys to attend that and I look forward to reporting the learnings out from that.
Just I threw, I drew in Larry was going to go. So he signed up. He's not going to be able to attend. Will be attending, but somebody else wants to go.
Well, I, it's unlimited. It's unlimited as far as I know. Yeah, many people.
I hadn't canceled his yet, but so there's a spot that you already have kind of reserved for SCAPU's.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Santiago?
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo what Counselor Jacobs was saying in regards to interim Larry, City Manager Larry. And also Counselor Holmes. And so she said it more eloquently and I, ditto to that. Also in regards to the leadership that we really, really need in seeking for a city manager and then there, and then hopefully also a new chief. So besides the Earth Day, it's going to, it's a busy week. So besides Earth Day, on Thursday, April 18th, there is a Columbia County Career Fair going on at OMC. So anyone that is interested, just I guess Google Columbia County Career, Career Fair. There's also a spring auction that's going on at the Grand Watts on April 20th at 4:30 PM. And I know there was something else that was going on in, oh. Spring cleanup. My husband's really excited about this. Saturday, April 20th, from 8:00 AM to noon. I know the city has advertised it in their website, so it's, it's spring and it's time to clean. So thank you and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Counsel Santiago. Counsel President Miller?
Thank you, Counselor Santiago. Counsel President Miller?
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, Kim, thank you so much for your work on the, uh, exploration, um, project. I know that it was a lot of work and. Yeah, and thanks to the sheriff's office too for participating and providing all the, uh, information that they did. Um, I look forward to, uh, helping the police department with the, uh, strategic plan and I think that we can accomplish something, uh, really great.
Thank you, President Miller. I did also want to thank Kim, Counselor Holmes, uh, for asking the hard question, taking a lot of. You know, taking a lot of pressure off of me. I appreciate that. Um, but the work is not done. Um, it really has just begun. Maybe some of the questions won't be as hard, but our goal is always going to be up there now. You see our goals. Create a safe city with a visible public safety presence. So that is going to be there. Every day, every meeting we talk about, that will be an important thing. And I do look forward to, um, the strategic planning and working. And, and growing our police department and all the good things, the training. I, I mean, I, I went through two pages of stuff the police. Was working on at our annual town meeting. I mean, it was just non-stop stuff that they were, they're working on. So I appreciate that. Again, I, JJ, it's, she wanted to come and talk about the, the Earth Day, but you guys have all brought that up. She wanted to know if we wanted a table there. Um, I said I'd sit at it if, after we go clean up, if, if anybody interested. And if we have any swag for their swag bags, if you guys have any swag for a day to put in some swag bags, she'd appreciate that. Earth Day. Um, that's it for tonight. I appreciate it.